And today, we have sound.
Okay, this, this is actually streaming right now, just so you all know.
Fifteen minutes early?
Yeah, I scheduled it to start fifteen minutes early, so I can make sure the sound is working.
Oh, that's so.
We've got sound, this time.
Okay, the sewer rate resolution down here?
Mm-hmm.
Is gonna be right after the, uh, right after you close the hearing.
Yeah.
Do the sewer rate resolution.
Hello, everybody. I'll run upstairs real quick and see what's going on with that.
You're not gonna see it from upstairs, Adam's coming in. Tell Adam or just send Ethan an email.
No, it shouldn't be a pipe, but I should be able to see if there's water coming from the roof.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
No.
Oh, am I blocking it?
No, 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 you're not, you're fine.
I don't wanna peek.
Nope, you're fine. We'll just focus it on the back of your head.
Spend a little bit of time in here. Been three years, three and a half years I was going through it. Can you hear me? It's been three and a half years I was going through it. I'm just wondering.
He said you gotta do a lot of talking, Bob.
Don't blame you. Right, you know that.
All good, Bob. It's all good.
Yep, nothing but the truth, so help me God.
We'll get through it.
That tuner is for Adam. I'm just gonna pull this one here, is that true?
Yep.
There, so, this is still working on my cell phone, but...
Adam, let me tell you.
Which hard drive space is on this thing? Okay.
So, Ethan emailed about that.
I've got a project site.
I don't know, that's quite an opening there.
Yeah, it's hard to tell, there's so much mess.
There's a washer dryer hanging out of the building.
That was there first.
Yeah, I seen it, I don't know.
Looks like there's one over there.
He ordered all this stuff today, so.
I think we'll look upstairs, but it's too dark.
It's gonna take at least that long, and if I could look there, I don't think it's that.
Glad you had a drive-in. He used to come into bed for him.
If Max went, if Max went to woke us up when they were pounding, we never would've... Because we had quite a fan going and air purifier right in our thing.
Shall we do the Bob, uh, what was his name? Oh, he was, he was looking at one that took better care of myself.
What do you have, are you good?
Could you sign in on the, on the, um, contact form, please?
That's you. Jonathan. That one's for you. I saved it for you. Right up front where we can keep an eye on you. Only one.
What's this here, those letters?
Those are the minutes, that's the, uh...
Quick question.
Have we sent IP? But it says one play, partly bad. Is it corridored?
No, it's one play.
That's, that's what you pay both in there?
It's based on actually, it's...
Okay.
That's Adam's seat, he'll have to sit up, up front.
Okay.
Thanks, Scott. Scary looking, I sent an email to, uh, Ethan, and Adam will be here in a little while. So who took Tom's paperwork off the table? Oh, from up there? Sorry, here, let me try with you.
I put that there as well.
Yeah.
So it's back home to the people.
Oh, that's smart. There you go.
For Tom to get here? So Adam was waiting for him to get here?
Around six thirty-seven?
Wait ten more seconds. Want to take your hat off, sir? Thank you. Republicans meeting with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and every justice for all. So first thing on the agenda for today is the sewer rates resolution. Is there any public comments about the sewer rates? Any comments from the board on sewer rates? Uh, barring any public comments, make a motion to accept these sewer rates.
Close the hearing.
Oh, close the hearing, correct. Closes the hearing on the sewer rates? Second. One favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have a motion to accept these sewer rates?
Second.
Trustee Borno?
Aye.
Trustee Dale?
Aye.
Trustee Pelkey?
Aye.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Aye.
And mayor votes aye. Any comments from the public for the open session?
Okay. Are we allowed to speak? Okay, so, what my issue is, is I'm here from Chapman Street regarding the burned building forty-three, forty-five. And all of our ne- all of the neighbors, we have concerns because that place is a mess. The vehicles, there are junk, it's a literal junkyard over there, there's abandoned vehicles, there's abandoned lawn tractors. There's so many leaves that if somebody went by and threw a cigarette, we'd have another fire. And our property values are all going down the toilet because that mess isn't getting cleaned up. I mean, I'd, I'd like to know what, when, and if anything is gonna be done about it.
Mr. Mayor, do you mind if I respond to that?
Yeah.
I'm John Cooper, I'm told officer.
Hi, John, he's spoken, he's...
They're doing the investigation, it's still under investigation by the, uh, the fire authority. Okay, the insurance company has been contacted, we had them put a fence all the way around it to protect the public. Awaiting the results of the, of the investigation, we'll move forward. The gentleman...
We have to wait till the fire investigation is done and the insurance settles.
But, but you, you could've done your job before that, that's what I'm trying to tell you, it wasn't done before. So now with the fire investigation and all, yeah, they're gonna drag it, naturally. They're gonna drag that for two years. You know, when you, when you go by Sharon Diamond Works and you come down into Champlain, okay? There, there's a, there's a fence around that building, right, at the very, you know what I'm talking about, over the bridge? Anybody here that lives in Dale, do you know?
Is that the building in downtown Champlain?
Yes.
Not in Champlain.
Yeah.
Okay? You know why that building is still there? They put a fence around it. And not, and the code said, as long as that fence is there, that's, that's secure and safe. If that falls down, and he hurt somebody or something, then he's gonna get sued. But that building has been there for what, ten years? Or more?
More, probably.
And you, you and I know that. I've lived here of my, all my life, I'm not thirty-five years old. You know, I'm forty years old, okay?
I'm gonna ask you a question, who do you think is gonna pay to take this building down?
Who's gonna pay to take the building down?
Yes.
I don't give a damn who, who's gonna pay for it.
How much can the taxpayers of the building also afford?
Taxpayers don't do that. He, he's gonna, he has insured, and there's a wire, we'll talk to him about that also. He has insured.
We've, we've elected the insurance company to make the decision before we're done to do anything.
Right now...
If we jumped the gun...
Right now, we're not worried about who's gonna pay for it, who's gonna, whatever's gonna pay for it. He's, he's, he must have insured, if he doesn't, he's up to boot. And that's, is that Tom Renee?
It is Tom Renee.
Okay, Tom, I didn't recognize you, Mike.
I'm a little incognito, yes, so...
We're all incognito with these masks, right?
Yeah, I'm a long time since I've seen you.
If we were to jump the gun...
But anyway, we're just discussing this, the place that burnt.
I'm chatting.
You know Ross's point, I don't know if you can do about it or whatnot, you know?
We had a fire last, uh, last week, Wednesday. Wednesday morning, and it was a duplex, and it completely burned. There were some issues of, uh, beginning to, you know, with...
Issues of?
Uh, vehicles in the way, uh...
Okay.
Probably, you know, a lot of material that was around it. Uh, we got called at, uh, four nineteen in the morning. Uh, we had fire crews there within seven minutes, put the wire on that fire. But now, it's, it's a complete, it looks like it's completely destroyed. And these are all the neighbors that came to the meeting and voicing their concerns on...
Okay.
I mean, what they're...
How, what it's gonna be result?
Right.
Torn down and cleaned up.
Well, I mean, if I, number one, if I can get some details about the property, I'm happy to send the landowner a letter on behalf of the village and say...
If somebody goes on there.
I understand, but one of the things we have to be concerned about is, is like, if there is an active fire investigation taking place on that property...
That's all done.
Be careful what we do.
I, I talked to the, I talked to the New York State troopers and all, and they ran the dogs in there and everything, and I said to them, I said, "What are you gonna do?" He said, "We're outta here."
Well, it's the troopers, let's talk about fire investigators.
Well, well, they were fun, they were, it said New York State Fire, Fire Investigators on them, and it said the New York State Troopers on the back. I don't know, I can't tell you. I just know that the one was on the front and the other thing was on the back.
But, again, I, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I heard a couple things just now that there was still an active investigation scene, if it is, then we can't really get involved in that, if, if there is one. But I don't know, so... We, we can certainly check into it, I can, and I'm, again, more than happy to send a letter to the property owner and say, you know, "For monitoring the situation, you need to keep us advised of what you're doing."
Apparently you live out of state? Tennessee? So...
The thing of it is...
Does, does, does he still has an obligation to...
Right. He, he was just up here with his insurance company, did he tame the building? Which is waiting for a decision from someone to move on?
The one thing you wanna worry about too is, let's face it, I mean, I'm there, somebody says, "Let's, let's make a lawsuit against it, against the village," because they're not, they're not pushing them a little bit on this, they're cleaning this up. They're gonna be in doo-doo again, why do you want that? You know, isn't it easier for a code enforcement officer to talk to him? I know the guy, I could talk to him. He's, he's a very religious guy, he...
Well, it sounds like, it sounds like, you know, he's doing that.
Yeah, we've, we've been doing that, he's not using. This guy in the back is like this guy.
If you want, I, I'm gonna go on my own.
I live, uh, west of the house, on the, on the west side, and, you know, it, it's been an eyesore there for years. With cars parked there, all the buildings are filled up, and it, it's just been a hazard. Has there been any code violations written up on this place before?
I, I don't know.
Yeah, who, who's a code enforcement officer here? Has there been any codes written up on that house before?
The fire, the file's that thick. Four, five years, danger.
It's a junkyard.
Is there any way we could at least get the leaves picked up? Because if someone drove by and threw a cigarette out, we have another fire. There's leaves everywhere, right in between Calvin's property and the driveway, and after my house almost burning down, I'm nervous about it.
Village residents should be responsible for, if it gets on somebody's property.
If you're already taken, and that, and that ticket, the court say that you gotta go there that night or that evening or whatever, you gotta, Aaron Root, damn well be there. Because if you're not...
But the problem is, if he's an out-of-state landlord, um, whether you send him a ticket, you send him a letter, if he doesn't show up in court, local town justice is not gonna issue a, like a bench warrant for some guy in Tennessee. Because all that, what that requires then is, is state troopers or somebody to go down in Tennessee and pick the guy up, and that's just not gonna happen.
Well, the thing of it is, he lives two streets over, he's right, I bet you he's right there right now.
He doesn't own the property, Bob.
No, but he's there.
That's her brother that used to own it, or...
Yeah. There's only a difference.
The woman that lived there...
He's there, you're talking about the person, you're not talking about the property now.
Listen, Bob.
You're talking about, right?
The woman that lived there, her son owns the house, and he's out in Mississippi or whatever, Tennessee, whatever.
I know that, I know that.
The guy that lives on State Street, that's her brother.
That's right, I know that.
So, he doesn't own it. He doesn't own it. So you can't condemn him. I know he's got a lot of the stuff there and stuff like that.
You, you can only enforce it against the owner.
I, I realize that too, but you, you, how about somebody that's taking care of something for the owner?
No, we can't see owner.
You, you can only prosecute the owner, you can't prosecute, if, if there's violations at a property, you can't go after like the tenant, you have to go after the owner of the property.
So then what you're gonna have to do is go to Tennessee or where the hell the guy's living in order to get him.
Or at least convince him he needs to do something about it, which is what we're trying to do.
But now, now, you, you, I, you, you can do something about all the stuff that's on the ground and all...
Well, maybe even, even from the maintenance.
Through the health department, that, that, that stuff is health, is...
My, my, my personal opinion, and, and Mr. Cooper can certainly call the health department, the health department's gonna defer to him. They're not gonna, they're not gonna come, they've got their own problems, they don't, the manpower to come up and look at a piece of property to determine whether there's health, health violations.
I, I agree, I agree with you that because even with the pigeons at the Old Holland Hotel, they, they didn't wanna come up.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct.
They're supposed to, but they don't come up.
They don't.
They don't come up.
I understand Mr. Cooper's saying about he doesn't want village residents to have to pay, but what about those of us who have been paying village taxes for years and years and years, and our property values are gonna be down the toilet because we live next to that mess? My husband and I would like to buy a bigger house, but we can't sell ours because we won't get anything near what it's worth living next to that mess. And we've paid taxes for over twenty years. How is that fair to us?
Thank you, how's all over Greg, don't be put that, yeah.
Yes, it did.
Hi, my name is Mark Burr, I'm reporting on Chapman Street, my wife, five minutes more in that house, my house would burn, and I, five minutes. It's a mess next door. Really is.
If our dog went to woke us up, we would've, we could've burned, he was out there with a garden hose trying to save our house. Because I've been complaining since June of the prior year about that mess.
Which is on fire.
Well, the thing of it is, what I'm trying to, trying to handle is, I hate letting you see all of these people, including myself, I'll go with them, to hire lawyers, and it really gonna cost the village some money, and I don't wanna do that, because I've been paying taxes here for sixty years. And I don't wanna do that.
We have to wait for the investigation to finish.
I have a question. Back to, it sounds like there's, there's more than one issue here. You're looking at the fire, you're kind of saying about property maintenance and, and the junk vehicles. So maybe we can address the property maintenance? Maybe you can get a hold of this guy and say, "Hey, can you hire somebody to pick up the leaves?" Because they're concerned about the neighbors.
Pick up the debris around.
Pick up, especially the leaves.
That, that night of the fire, I had raised the leaves up to my property line. The night of the fire, the leaves burnt right up to my property line, within four feet of my house.
That night.
They were burning, let me tell you.
And, and in the backyard right now, there's at least two to three inches of leaves throughout the whole property, and that's been there since last fall. He doesn't, he doesn't do anything with the property. He just leaves it alone. Some, we just don't want this to fall through the cracks at some point.
No, we don't either.
Yeah, and it's not going. We just have to wait for the, the investigation to finish, the insurance, insurance to figure out what they're gonna do for their settlement. And we can't really rush that along, because if we don't, if we, if we interrupt the investigation, then that could also come back on us.
Listen, I, I get that. It's gonna take some time to conduct that investigation, because that night, they determined it possibly was arson. Because of different origins of the fire on a different location. I get that. It's gonna take some time. We just, we just want you guys to be aware of our concerns with the property.
Now, and again, what I would propose to do is at least I can write to the property owner and say, "Listen, you know, we're concerned about the issues that exist in the property, whether it's your vehicle, property maintenance, the fire damage, whatever. We need to get some things resolved, property, managed standards, and investigation's still ongoing, but some of these other issues we think are probably still be, can be addressed in the interim, and we'd like them to get addressed." And somebody else to say?
I think if we've seen a little bit of progress, I think everybody's fine with the ideas.
Right, correct. I mean, again, this fire happened, when did this fire happen? Last one, I said?
Last one, yeah, last one.
It hasn't even been a week yet.
It's not been a week yet, so I mean, unfortunately, hopefully, I can think of as possible, but sometimes it takes a little.
Forty-five.
It's been going on two weeks, it'll be two weeks.
Yeah, a week, sorry. Yeah.
As soon as I get a release from them, I got the guy's phone number, and I'll have him, the minute I contact him, he contacted the insurance company, and they came right up and they fenced it. So they're on, they're on the right page, but as soon as we get a release from the people that are investigating, we can go back to the insurance company and tell them we want it cleaned up.
Okay.
That's what we'll do.
If you can send me some of their contact information, they have, send it to me tomorrow, and let me take a look at it and see what I can do there.
Because we do have problems with absentee landlords, but this guy has been in contact with us, has been timely of getting...
Yeah, he flew up to be with the insurance company, and they came over there.
Yeah, that's real fast for something to pull out, so.
It's only been a week.
John, I have one other question. Did you write them up, right on the spot, that it's dangerous and unsafe?
Write them up for what?
Should I write them up, "That building was dangerous, dangerous," you don't care who owns it. If the person that's in that building, that takes care of that building, is the one responsible, at that time, at that fire.
Was nobody taking care of the building to begin with?
He was taking care of that building. He was putting junk in that building. Don't tell me what to take care of.
Again, again, we can only deal with the, we can only deal with the owner of the building. You can't deal with other people, right? You gotta deal with the owner of the building.
Well, okay, what you're saying is...
It's not the owner in that pile.
Theoretically, he is the tenant.
Yeah, but the owner's responsible. The owner is the person, the landowner is the person, I mean, if tenant's doing something illegal to the property, that's, you know, state police issues too, but, but we can only enforce, we can only enforce violations against the owner of the property.
Only sort of mess, I'll tell you that.
I agree with you there.
So in other words, what you're saying is, Tom, that could be there for a long, long, long time.
Well, I don't, I don't know.
All the buildings on that property are all still filled with junk. I, I don't mean good stuff. I mean paper and bottles and whatever he had.
Well, the cars are...
Everything's just stuffed in that garage, stuffed in the bag buildings. You know, who put it there? Not the owner.
Again, again, if it's a junk, the owner's the one responsible. He's the one that'd be responsible to clean it up. He'd be responsible to pay fines. He'd be responsible to take whatever action needs to be taken to come into compliance.
No, do you ever, do you ever go after code violations and property maintenance? Because this, this place hasn't been maintained in years, many years.
We have, we have in the past.
They have read this.
What about this one?
They broke this up seven, eight years ago.
There's been complaints against them.
They broke this up. The guy's like, I'm, because you had not had a big discussion about this one. Ask some of the landlords, "How do you handle it?"
Yeah.
There's one apartment building I thought was abandoned until I saw lights on. I was like, "Oh, was people living in there?"
He wasn't living in there.
I wasn't, I was talking about a different building.
No, he wasn't in Tennessee, huh? He couldn't get in that building. Everybody living in it.
Once, once the fire investigation is done, is it possible for the village to clean it and add the bill on to his tax, on to his taxes?
It is. I mean, some of you don't remember that, but when the whole Holland Hotel situation went down, that's one of the things that the village did to, to clean that up. And there've been a couple of the buildings. There was a building right, right down here on...
Montgomery.
On Lays Street. And there's been a couple of other ones that, over the years, we've found indeed be dangerous buildings. It's like, in our ordinance, there's a dangerous buildings section, and there's very specific steps that we have to take to have a building found dangerous. And we have to get an engineer, we have to hire an engineer to go in and redo it, give us a report. It's a, it's a process. And ultimately, if, if the applicant decides not to do anything, the village can take steps to, to basically demolish the building and add the costs for, whatever the costs are, to the taxes on the property. That's, and that, that was done specifically on the Holland.
So years ago, the county used to take and pay, pay for it, and then they reimbursed the village and stuff like that, but they don't do that no more.
Correct. They did that at the time for Holland, which is one thing, one of the issues of the problem with Patterson Building and the village of Champlain, because that, that building is flooded with asbestos, and we've got a couple of incidents over the years as what it would cost to take that building down, which we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, which would then really just fall into the hands of the village, having to eat that, because the county's not gonna reimburse them. And we already know the county wouldn't reimburse the village for that. And that owner of that building was in Canada, and he's not coming down with it.
Oh, I have another question. When I was code enforcement officer, I took, I have, I just had taken all the information with me. I didn't have it at home. I took out, took down fourteen buildings. I'm the one that declared them, and you, I believe you were the, you were, you were the representative for the village of Ross's Point. I took out fourteen of them, okay? I'm the one, and Bobby Clark, we took the two of us. I could, I could get anybody on with me as long as they were connected with the village. And Bobby and I, we wrote them up. I deemed them dangerous and unsafe. Their lawyers came, how many lawyers came, and sat right in here, in the board, and argued against us, and they lost. How many?
A few.
There was about, there was about six of them that lost, out of the fourteen buildings, and that's not including the trailer parks that I, that I got rid of. And I'm not bragging, I'm just telling you, if I did it then, there's no reason why the laws are, I don't believe the laws are changed anymore. I don't believe they're changed a bit. So that's derelict of duties, and somebody, somebody's not doing their duties.
The key thing is...
Bob, Bob, the fire happened two weeks ago. We're in the midst of an investigation of the property. We want, we're gonna look into it, we're gonna take action on it, we're gonna do what we have to do to, to protect everybody. But, but things don't happen overnight either, as you know.
No, but somebody should've been on that property, when, when, when the, when the fire department was there, because the fire department owns that, as long as they're on there. Nobody else goes in. The only person that can go in is the owner, and if he wasn't the owner, he can't, he couldn't go in, okay? But the code enforcement officer could be there. He could walk around, he can look around and find all of, all of the discrepancies he wants. If he finds enough discrepancies, that is legal. I don't get, anybody tells me. Don't forget, I was proud of when the family with, 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 you know who, my father, okay? I mean, let's face it, I knew a lot of laws. That's the only reason I took the damn job. Because I would've, I could've if I wanted to take, get the, the, whatever information I wanted, you know what I mean? We had enough packing. I'm not bragging, I'm just telling you the facts. And there's no reason that those facts still do not exist right now. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. So, fires aren't concerned. The village of Ross's Point is in dereliction, what, what's happening here. And technically, if these people wanna turn around and sue the village because of that, they can sue the village and blame them being a shit. And I hope it doesn't happen, because every one of these people, and I don't blame them, I don't blame them. There were, there's a couple of them right next door. There's a couple right here that damn near burnt to death. And something has to be done, so at least do what you can. Go in there, even if they don't, just tell the guy that's right here, "We're gonna, we're gonna go in there. I don't care. We'll put it on your taxes, whatever." At least clean the outside of it. Try to make the building halfway safe. If a kid goes in there and, and there's all kinds of crap in there, you can open that gate. I can go right now and open that gate. I'll bring you over there if you want. And you, you can open that gate.
That would be basically against the law, Bob.
Yes, because that's trespassing, and I wouldn't do it. But what I'm saying is, trespassing you're not. If a kid does it, or somebody does it, or a drunk does it or something, the village is still gonna be in the doo-doo. I don't care how you do, how you look at it. Am I right or wrong?
Essentially, you're wrong, but that's beside the point.
Well, how, how would I be wrong?
Because, because the owner of the property is responsible to maintain his property. He's responsible to secure it.
But he's not here, so he can't maintain it.
He's taken some steps to, to at least try to secure the property and take some action on it.
But it's not secure. There's no locks on that. There's no locks.
I, I don't know, Bob. I'm just saying, he is the one that's ultimately responsible for his property. Again, it sounds like we're taking some reasonable steps to rectify the situation, and we'll continue to take steps to try to rectify the situation. It sounds like it's an awful situation. We don't want to continue, but we'll do what we can to rectify it as soon as we can.
And I realize that. It's, it's all I'm asking is, is to see if you can't go in there and at least clean this stuff up, all this.
You can't go in there, Bob, right now, because that's trespassing, and that's against the law, okay? And if you go in there and you trespass, that's against the law.
I'm not gonna go in there.
All right, I'm just saying.
But you can bet your life, if somebody throws a cigarette or something, and something else stuck burns in there, the village of Ross's Point's gonna be sued, so goddamn bad, they won't have enough taxes to pay. You know, and it's not right.
Correct. I understand.
Right from the beginning, something wasn't done correctly.
I don't know.
Right from the beginning, wasn't done correctly.
We need to look at it.
And I mean, I'm just telling you the facts. The facts are the facts. You know that, and I know that.
I understand.
Now, you're a hell of a good lawyer, I'll tell you that. Because when I worked, you worked with me, things worked out perfect. And I congratulate you on that.
Thank you. We'll do our best, all we can do.
And I enjoyed working with you. I mean, I'm not here to argue with you or whatnot. I like you. You've always done a good job.
It sounds like an awful situation. We need it, we need it resolved.
It is, you know, but I mean, I'm just trying to figure out some way that will appease, I'm across the street, so it's not bothering me. The only thing that bothers me is if, if we get a wind that's coming from that direction, which is three quarters of the time, all the leaves are gonna come over me. I have more leaves than anybody else, you know? Mark can tell you that easy, by picking up by a truckload, you know? In order to stop somebody from throwing a cigarette out and burning my house down, you know?
Understood.
But it's just, something has to be done. I mean, we gotta, you know, we gotta get on them. You gotta, you gotta do a little pushing there. And to me, the pushing, at least I would like to see is at least the outside part of it cleaned up and all. So, you know what I'm saying? There's not that much to it, to do that, but it's enough. Junk out there, laying out there, and stuff that. If a kid does go in, even though, even a young kid or a drunk or something goes in there and they get hurt, there's nothing stopping to pursue the village, even though they're wrong. There's nothing stopping to suing the village. Now the village is gonna be right in the doo-doo again, because they're gonna have to hire you, they're gonna have to hire all kinds of lawyers. It's gonna cost the taxpayers more money. That's what I don't wanna see, you know? I don't think it's fair to the taxpayer.
I think we can all agree, nobody wants to see that, Bob.
No, and I don't, I'm only trying to be fair to, I'm not, I'm not worried about myself. I'm worried about everybody, the taxpayer. There's a lot of people in this town that don't have a hell of a lot of money, you know what I mean? And they don't need less money, you know? So don't hurt them, you know?
I agree. So what can you do?
Thank you for all your help.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll go back again to all the issues.
I just want to say thank you for listening to all of us. We appreciate that very much.
It's, it's a frustrating situation for all of us to see that building there, because I don't want to see anyone like that there, but things take time.
I mean, I've, I've lived here my whole life, and I love the village, and it makes me really sad to know that my property value is low because of that. Calvin's property value is low because of that, and it's frustrating when we, I know I complained, not about the fire, nothing to do with the fire, but the abandoned vehicles and everything else. I've been complaining since June of last year.
There's a lady right there.
There's a file full of complaints about the property that we got.
My neighbor.
We will drive out to let this one go.
Thank you. I, I really do appreciate it.
We'll keep out of this and make sure it's cleaned up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Any public comments about anything else?
That's it up for tonight.
Minutes of the previous meeting. Any questions about the minutes of the previous meeting?
Make a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Uh, terms of the turnover, any additions or deletions to the bills?
We had one deletion tonight. This is Champlain Valley Electric, an amount of two oh five twelve. It was the wrong bulbs that came in, so need to move that.
Any questions from the board?
Make a motion to accept the bill amended?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any correspondence today?
Yes, we have a letter from the Montgomery Hose Hook and Ladder Company. Dear Mayor and Trustees, please be advised that our annual election of officers held on April sixth, twenty twenty-one. The following members were elected by our membership to serve as chiefs until April twenty twenty-two. We submit their names for your approval. These have also been added to that update for the mayoral appointments, which will come up, but who they elected was, Mike LeBlanc as chief, Maurice Snide, first assistant chief, and Sean LaBombard, second assistant chief. Thank you for your consideration of these elected officers.
Need a motion to accept that?
No, it's on, it's on the update for mayoral appointments. You'll get to it soon.
Yeah, so where that comes in is the additions to the mayoral appointments, because we didn't have the fire advisory board and EMS advisory appointed, because we didn't know what the turnout of the election was gonna be, who was gonna win. So, I appoint those people that are, that have won their elections in the fire department to fill those positions on the boards.
And also, on your mayoral appointments, if you all have it, is also their EMS and fire advisory board delegates, so if you could do that as a slate?
Yeah, appoint them all to the slate.
You need a motion on that?
Yeah, are you making a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the people that's on the slate for the fire advisory board and delegates and alternates.
Second up?
All in favor?
Aye.
There any other correspondence today?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, so, we already did the addition to the mayoral appointments. Story walk. The library and rec center got a grant for children books on pedestal and pom, pom scotch games on the village walkway at the rec center. It's all grant funded. There's no matching contribution that we've got to do. Uh, does this take a motion to accept, Susan?
No, because there's not a, an in-kind funding. It's informational.
Okay. How much did the grant worth?
I believe it's four thousand and something. I believe it's four thousand and something. And Ethan is going to sync the polls and put them around the walkway out there.
Uh, Complete Streets, someone, someone from Complete Streets will be coming by sometime to see what, sometime in May to see what we need for signs. They already know that most of downtown is a state street, so they're, they're prepared to handle all the permitting for state road, for whatever signs that we need. And I'll have more news when that happens, but we just know sometime in May. There was a meeting last week on recreational marijuana legalization. All prior local laws and rules and laws on the matter are superseded by the state, but I don't think we got any laws in the particular, maybe elected to the state anyway. And the only thing we could do, if we chose to do so, was say that there wouldn't be a dispensary allowed in the, in the village. But then we'd lose possible sales tax revenues if we did that. Because we get, depending on how we, if we, whatever arrangement we have with the town, or, yeah, we get four percent, that's split between us and the town. So if, it could be fifty, fifty, we have the arrangement for them, otherwise it's like, we get one percent, they get three. So we'd have to make an arrangement for the town on that. But those dispensaries would still be, they're, they're still restricted by zoning laws, so that way dispensary cannot show up in someone's residential neighborhood, it has to be a commercial properties, which is nice.
I mean, quite frankly, at this point in time, in the village, marijuana dispensary is probably not listed or permitted to use anywhere, so they probably need a use variance no matter where they want to go.
Yeah.
At this time.
The, the way that, the way they talked about it, though, is if you didn't make an action, it goes into default. Like say if you didn't want a dispensary, you have to say you don't want a dispensary. But if you don't do, you don't make it a local law type thing, then it goes into default where they can come into a commercial, residential, a commercial building and open a shop.
But the way that the New York State is doing it, we have to actively, by permissive referendum, have public referendum to ban it in the village.
Correct. Okay. If not, it would be allowed after a certain term, or a certain timeline, apparently, that's what I got out of it.
I've got the.
There's a webinar.
Yeah, there's a webinar, and I, it's recorded, I can send that to you.
Okay, I'll take a look at it.
This is an interesting webinar. And no matter what, though, with the state law, it's, if someone wanted to have a marijuana greenhouse in the village or a town that banned it, we have no say whatsoever, other than zoning laws over whether someone has a greenhouse or not, for someone to grow it commercially. Also, in like two or three years, they're introducing laws about people growing it in their own homes for personal use. We also would not be able to have rules against that.
It's restricted, you can only have like three adult plants.
Yeah, like three plants.
Three.
Minimums, but as far as a greenhouse, are they saying that that falls under heavy market or something?
I'm not sure, it's the greenhouse part of it, but.
Yeah, they just said that we couldn't, if someone wanted to grow it on a commercial scale, in a warehouse or something, we have no say.
Really?
Yeah.
Doesn't make sense to me.
It was interesting.
Dispensary part, maybe I could understand at some point if you, if you restrict it, but, but because you look at that kind of operation, as, and as we've had prior discussions about concerns about electric use and things of that nature, you put one of those facilities in a, in a warehouse building, that, that's going to generate, that's going to require some electricity.
Some electricity, water and everything.
Water and electricity.
But New York State, yeah, New York State is taking all that out of the village's hands, and they're dealing with it at the state level only, which is kind of annoying.
But they're looking for areas to go. They're looking, they're seeking places like T utilities to, to put these infection codes in.
Right.
You have to be. They're using water customer and sewer customer.
Yeah, definitely.
They certainly be using a lot of water and sewer. I have the joy of inspecting those places in Vermont. Okay. Jason wants to go to the nightcom meeting in May as a delegate, if nobody else is interested in going?
Make a motion to let him go?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, I may or may not be able to attend, but even if I'm able to attend, I want him with me anyway. I don't know what my schedule is at that, at that time in May. Uh, Village White Garage sale, it's on private property, but in the past, we provided maps plus a list of what was being sold at each house. I would like to continue that practice. I'm not sure if that takes the motion or not. Susan, who does the map?
Well, um.
Billy Clark?
Yeah, we do a map, they give us information, we put on a map, and we put a little blurb of what they're selling. The good thing is, if we do that this year, we didn't do it last year because of COVID, and we didn't want to be involved, even though it's on private property. If we do the map, we could at least put on there, you know, COVID isn't over, remember to wear a mask, you know, gives us a chance to get that information out while supporting the village.
Are you looking at the weekend of the twentieth?
Twenty fifth.
Before the Fourth of July celebration?
Yeah, it's the fourth.
Yeah.
Because the Fourth of July celebration is going to be on the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. It's going to be Saturday and Sunday for the weekend, for the weekend. So usually we do the Village Yard, uh, Yard Sale the week before, is that what you're looking at?
Um, really, aren't they done on the Saturday of?
No, because.
The week before?
They did away with that because it interferes with the fire department, because they do a boot drive and there's different things going on. So they're trying to get people to come to our community two weekends in a row this way.
Okay.
So it's better for our businesses and.
So the Saturday before then would be the date, okay?
It would be the twentieth of June.
Okay. Because people have been calling and wanting to know about that, so, yeah, if you do a, a motion on it, then that, you know, then I can advertise it a little and let people know we'll list it.
I'll put it in form of a motion that we advertise and sponsor the Village Yard.
Second.
White Yard Sale.
On second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Uh, Trustee Arnold?
Uh, I went to the library board meeting the other, last week. And have a few, few things that they'd like to have done over there. First of all, I, uh, they want a couple of signs where it says library on the corner of White Avenue. And I went seeing John, and he's looking up to see if he can have some signs made up and stuff like that, or to turn for the library and stuff like that. Because they don't want to use Lake Street driveway in. So they want to tell him to.
Benny, that's one of the things that the Complete Streets is going to look at, they might do that for us for free.
Okay, well, the signs, I don't think are very expensive, two to, uh, probably twenty bucks a piece, something like that, so anyhow. But, and also, if you'd like to have the, if possible, a railing put on the cellar. When you come down the cellar stairs from outside, if you'd like to have a railing put on the side of the, the stairway, because there's no railing there. Not only that, it's most likely a, a law, so.
Probably a building code requirement, one way or the other.
Yeah, that's ADA compliant. Insurance, insurance, I, I'm surprised insurance company has a complaint, they never send these back in.
No.
Yeah, they have, they, they sell them every year, they never bought it.
The public doesn't.
They never get in the doorway, that's why. Usually that door is closed, there's an inside door and outside door, you don't see the stairs when you're walking around the cellar, and you bring them back up through the stairs in the middle of the building, they'll see it, so they never really caught it.
That's kind of, that's not a very good inspector, because that doesn't stop me when I'm inspecting stuff in Vermont.
Well, anyhow, so, and they'd like to have them doors. There's two doors down there that they were trying to sell, and she liked to get them out of the cellar, because she's cleaning the cellar. If we could have the street department or somebody, or electric department pick them out and bring them up to the sewer plant, or the store, or the blue building, or someplace.
Yeah, those are not standard size doors, are they?
No.
It's going to be hard to find anyone that wants them.
They're a heavy duty door, that's for sure. And also, uh, at the gazebo, I've been down there hugging around and stuff, and I had the electric department, I asked the electric department if they would take them, pull some of them weeds hard and try not to increase them. That's why I was just looking at the different things, and how they said finalizing. And I know myself and Trustee Arnold was talking today that it'd be nice if, 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 like our mechanic could attend these meetings, because he has a lot of insight on what's going on. I mean, we rebuilt, when I was a superintendent of the village, we, we rebuilt the industrial water system down there, and that's working perfect. And there was a lot of changes that were done that the engineers didn't think about it at the time, because when you're putting these things together, it was a good idea at the time. It looks good on paper, but when it came time to actually do it, we did a lot of modifications. And these modifications could have been done and saved a lot of money in the long run. Because, you know, and I was just wondering if like one of the commissioners or the co-commissioners could go to the, go to the, one of the meeting halls.
Yeah, and I just see the problem.
Like for everybody, including people in the village, if they wanted to come.
No, what I like to see is, if we have any more meetings with the water plant, I like to have.
At least one person.
At least one, one person from the water commissioners or whatever, or an assistant commissioner, to go to them meetings.
And there will be, there will be, that's what I'm saying, there will be.
Well, I hope so. Well, I just made a motion that they're going to, one person should go.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I just.
It just, I think it makes a lot of sense, I mean, if they're the ones dealing with it hands-on, they should be involved at least, because they could pick up things that, you know.
Well, the thing about it.
Nobody else really knows about.
Is, well, my concern is, don't wait till the plans are a hundred percent done. Then when you bring them to the board, or we go through them, and we go through with the mechanic, and then fifty percent of the plans get changed, it's kind of wastes the money.
Yeah.
So let's, let's talk about this as we go in steps, because I like the way that you're doing the progress sets in percentages, which is a good idea, it's good to have everybody's thought at the time.
Yeah, no, it makes, it makes sense, I, I, I think it's, it's a good move.
And so far, so far, before we can even start to submit anything as a design, we actually have to have the property signed.
Right, well, that's pretty much in the works.
We're right.
We're what, ninety percent done of that process?
Yeah, we'll ask for discussion about that this evening.
Okay. So that's all I have for tonight, probably enough.
Uh, okay, anything on the electric boilers?
It's, well, I have, I have that, that local law to extend that moratorium done. I was tweaking some of it this afternoon, because I wanted to kind of bring it with me, but I didn't get it totally completed. I should be able to set it up to Susan to circulate to all of you, at least, hopefully by tomorrow.
Now, yeah, I did, would that be done in a resolution, or can we just do it as a motion?
It should be a local law.
Oh, it's got to be a local law?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
And that's just to protect the interest of the village's elected regent there, so.
Right, and, and as a side note, I did follow up with, I, I, the gentleman at New York State that I spoke to, I, my comment, I can't even name him, but he was, the last time I think I was here, I mentioned I'd follow up with him, which I did. And he recalled our prior conversation and said, okay, I'm going to, I'll look into this more, see if I can find something for you, and I didn't find anything else, so we may, we may have to sit down, put together our own local law dealing with, with that particular, for that particular ordinance. But we need to get the moratorium extended first, and, and that should be, that should be up for you guys tomorrow.
Perfect. Will we have to have a special session to do that, or can that be done with the next regular session?
I think he's going to have time to get it on a regular, that's regular session.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Open the, a public meeting, right, a public hearing?
Yeah, it's got to be a hearing.
Correct, yeah, that is what.
Even for the moratorium?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, code enforcement officer, any reports?
You skipped Joe Rodriguez.
I have none. I have none.
I'm sorry, I did skip you, you're, it's supposed to be after, I am, sorry.
It's all good, I have nothing this evening.
Okay, um.
You said you had. It's on our agenda, it's what we spoke about this evening, and we're doing the best we can with that, I hope the public's all aware of that. And I'll try to keep everybody posted, I'm going to get the phone numbers of the neighbors, thanks, so, so if I do hear something, I'm going to advise them right away.
Susan, is there anything else?
No, I have nothing else today, thank you.
Any more public comments? I'd like to apologize to Rodriguez today, I skipped him, last time I called him Gonzalez.
I make a motion, we go on to.
We, yeah, I would just like, if we gave a motion for executive session regarding purchase of property.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I make a motion, we go on to recess?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.